We are ready.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Northern City Council Urban. Let's see, yes, the Northern City Council and Urban Renewal Work Session for Monday, September 11th here in the council chambers. We go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask if there's any public comment this evening.
There is not.
There is not any public comment. All right, then this will take us to item three, which is review the city council agenda for September 12th. I am going to ask our city administrator to walk us through this nice thick packet here. Doozy for us.
Thank you. I might have more stuff.
Looks like we got a lot of tomorrow night. We'll start off with some ceremonial items.
Yeah, so tomorrow we'll have, um, also Gaither had already retired.
Yeah.
So he went to take some downtime and travel. And so our schedule and their schedule and then canceling the second meeting didn't coincide. So he's actually coming back, but he's been retired for six weeks now. You ever take off for game there? So, um, so we have a platform and so, uh, the chief will say, uh, nice words and get a photo.
There'll be a lot of photos tomorrow night, people, so.
Yes, a lot of photos, a lot of photos.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because it shows up in the newspaper, have you noticed?
Yeah.
So, all right, um, and then, um, Chris, Christopher Tanner from the library will be five years of service.
Nice.
So we'll recognize Christopher. A ceremonial swearing in Patrol Officer Michael Minor, he was the committee. Services Officer, C S O, and promoted to Officer. Um, so it's always good when we can promote from within. And so that'd be the swearing in. Uh, we also will do an introduction of Joshua Noatney, he's the new community service officer. And so, uh, um, he's, uh, the one out there, uh, every morning, uh, following up, in fact. Um, little tidbit, he says he spends about half his day, uh, on code enforcement. Uh, and then can get back and start, um, doing paperwork and, uh, following up on email communication. Um, uh, however, sometimes another code enforcement comes in and, uh, he's got to trump that. Um, but that gives you an idea of what his day is like. Uh, and then we have a proclamation, this is National Drive Electric Day, so the city is, um, a co-sponsor, uh, with this event. In cooperation with, um, itty bitty N. Pacific Power, um, and, uh, Aqua, um, Oregon Coast Visitor Association. Um, and, uh, the city was awarded a matching grant of 20,000 to help with this event festival, the two-day, um, event festival. Um, so there's actually, uh, and then, uh, 20,000 has come in, uh, to help on the promotion, uh, doing videos. And then, um, 20,000 has come in to actually, uh, do the event.
And Mr. Maline, do you know, is, is Archimoto coming, are they going to have some of the electric vehicle cars?
Vehicles will be here.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, motorcycles, trucks, cars, um, and other, um, uh, E V. And so it is a two-day, uh, uh, E V electric, um, event.
Those are, I took my business students to the organization in Eugene a couple of years ago to look at their business model and their cars. And, um, it's really cool. So when this happens, because coming up here.
Yeah, a lot of sponsors on this one.
That'll be fun to go look at.
So, um, this event has occurred.
No.
Who it broke.
He was thinking, no.
Okay. I know this is not our.
They had some, I think they had some construction.
So, uh, this event has occurred before in, uh, North Bend, but not at this level of magnitude. And so, um, uh, the city, um, has come on board to help, um, with, um, uh, spearheading work. Organization, marketing, some of the logistics. Um, and, um, so we'll also be sharing up some of our space. Um, so it'll be spread out. In fact, there'll be entertainment in the event tent. So it's a pretty large, um, downtown event. Um, and then, um, there may or may not be a film crew here when the proclamation is done. Um, it's part of that larger grant. Apparently the team's coming in, I think, from Texas. So, um, bring in pretty heavy equipment. And then, um, uh, there'll be, um, another proclamation for, uh, shipyard, uh, Judo's Finest. Um, they are going to, uh, this is the first, um, this is, um, um, basically the reincarnated group. Um, from SWAT, but they are going to their first, uh, they got invited to the first international, um, uh, performance. It'll actually be, I think it's in Mexico.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken. And so, uh, kind of big news, they've been aggressively advertising to help offset. And so, uh, we want to, uh, recognize them and then, um, let them know that, uh, we support them. Uh, they're located, um, over on Broadway.
And do we have confirmation that the, they're going to be there? I know the city recorder had reached out. But what's, and I, mom works with, uh, Councilor Schultz, right? Yeah, did you have questions?
Yeah, so I'll talk.
Okay.
We want to make sure that they're here.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's just been a great hometown success story to watch them grow up.
That's really cool.
And just get to the level that they are. And so.
And they're seniors this year.
Oh.
Seniors in.
Yeah. So it sounds like we have a contact here if we need to make sure that they get here.
Make it happen.
Yeah.
Um, on the, uh, consent, uh, calendar, um, we have approval of minutes, any issues, concerns, uh, changes on the minutes. All right. Um, there, the approval, the special pod meeting minutes, this is August 14th. Um, any issue with those minutes, changes, corrections? Um, you have, uh, your standard, um, acknowledgement of the bills. Um, interestingly enough, um, I received an email today that just says, you know, when it comes to city finances, we're just not that transparent. And, um, uh, we continue to express that how more transparent, unless I send the packet to you, can we be? Everything that the city spends, everything about their finances, it is online. You can come to our budget meetings, you can come here, um, but everything that the city spends, you can see right here. It's, it comes before, everybody sees it, and you can actually go back and see all the archives, it's all there. But again, transparency means different things to different folks, and maybe, uh, we should be more opaque. I don't know. Uh, appointments to Special Events Committee, uh, there are two, uh, folks, uh, in there, uh, Ms. Color, Mr. Bean. Um, so those are the appointments to Special Events Committee. We have an O L C C license application, the police department's already reviewed and recommended that move forward, that's the easy mark. Um, so whenever there's changes or, uh, annual renewals, they come to the process. Um, there is a new copier printer, um, in your annual budget. Uh, when we went through budget process in the capital, we had listed a new, uh, printer. Um, this is for, um, the finance administration, uh, upstairs. I don't think that you can make Rose more happier. It's to get her a new printer. In fact, I told folks, sometimes you need a PhD just to figure this thing out, because if something gets stuck, she's, she's pretty much the only person that can figure it out. But if you do have questions about the contract or, or the agreement, um, our finance directors here can answer any questions if you have any. All right, the next is authorization to purchase a one-ton pickup for the street department. Also, again, um, during your budget process, um, it was budgeted, um, for this. And so we have our, um, public works director here, should you have any questions, now would be a good time to ask them about. How we buy things off, um, competitive bid, um, in order to pay the equipment. Any questions? Right, the next item is a purchase and installation of a Deacon Douglas heat pump system for the police department. And so administratively, uh, chief, if I'm not mistaken, I think I already administratively authorized this, that correct? And so this is actually coming because they're on site right now. And, and so for what it's worth, um, uh, the, during the budget process, um, we list out, um, upgrades to the department. So, so that you know, um, areas of the police department have never had heater air. So, and, um, it's getting hotter and hotter, and they wear all the gear. And so, um, it's not safety or, and it's not a safe approach to bring in portable heaters. And that's what had been occurring. So, um, it's taken us a couple of years to the point where, as you know, we've had various upgrade projects in City Hall. This is the first year, and so I went ahead and administratively authorized that one. Um, because this is when they could actually get here, and just scheduling contractors right now are not easy. But the chief's here, uh, if you want to sweat them out, he can answer questions.
Did you say you never had heat or air?
No, in fact, I, I, I. Yeah, it's, it's, it's they, so you'll see their doors, their windows open on the side of the, it's why, um, uh, during the hot, hot. Um, they bring in fans, um, it's just, the building actually wasn't designed for how we're using. They're in an area that used to be the fire department. And so if you look at that side wall back here, you'll actually see the outline of the old, um, uh, curved doors where it used to open. And so when you go upstairs where Rose is, that extra area that's outside, that used to be actually where they used to hang the hoses. And then I know on the far side was the library, which then actually had been in two different locations. The mayor helped move books when the library moved to its new location. And then my office where I am actually has been multiple things, including at one time, um, the permitting, planning, zoning. Um, so we've played, but this physical building, as you have it, actually was never designed to be a police department. Um, and I think you know, um, because former Chief McCullough basically came out and said flat out. When we bring in the state to do the inspection of the facilities here, we're not going to pass because our building's not, um, conducive to a police department. Um, you're not supposed to have civilians and everybody interacting back and forth. And so you actually, you know, when you recognize that this area over here is the police conference room. Then on the backside, you actually have the command staff way down here. In this other wing, you have the officers. In this hallway, you have a room where they give video testimony and then another for the detective. And so throughout the day, you can imagine we're passing folks and we have no clue who they are, they're getting escorted by police. But we figure they must either be a suspect, a witness, or they must just be here for something else. And you never, i- it's not a, a safe environment. But it's what we have until we make it work. Um, but what I understood from Chief McCullough at the time is, you know, he's like, you really need to put a law and give us like the rest of the wing. So that y'all are separated, you shouldn't be coming late. And so, um, so we just haven't brought them in to do that inspection.
Then you get heat and air.
They're going to get heat and air. And so, yeah, and so, um, again, um, because of the timing, um, I, I went ahead and authorized that. Because otherwise, we weren't going to get it in a timely manner, just the reality of it. But any questions for the chief? And then, uh, last year, was it last year, we actually put, uh, we put. The system in dispatch, which also did not have, I mean, I, I went in there one day and I couldn't believe how freezing it was that. In, um, that, that your records folks were in there, but they now actually have a system in there. In the squadron. So we took care of that last year first, now we're actually getting to the command staff. Yeah. All right, disposal of nineteen ninety-nine Ford F-150, uh, pickup truck. Um, this one, I believe, is the, um, uh, old one at the police department, uh, fire department. Um, it's the, um, uh, it, it's the old, old F-150. Um, I will tell you that, um, our city recorder, um, has worked, she reached out to all the other city reporters. We're switching over, we just haven't gotten the success that we believe we should be getting on selling some of the surplus. And so, um, after some recommendations, uh, we have an account for gov deals. And we will be doing that. An example is our current system. Uh, we put a reserve on the old S R O, uh, Charger, I believe it was for four thousand, it didn't even get that. And I, I told the chief flat out, it's like, I will buy that thing for four thousand before I'll let it go that cheap. Uh, it's, it's got a lot of miles on it, but it's a good car and you could part it out for more than that. And so that's why we're switching, because we have to maximize what we can get on our surplus. It's not junk, but it, it's not usable to us at that, you know, it's more maintenance to keep it on the road than it is. And so in this case, um, uh, others have a lot more, um, and then gov deals also will market, um, for us. And it doesn't cost the city anything, there's actually a surcharge on for the buyer, um, to it. So there's no cost to the city for any of those services.
So on the, on the, uh, the Ford F-150, does it say here that, that, is this, this is the, it's going to be used for fire department training? Am I looking at the wrong one?
Um, this one, they're going to tear it up and use it, we're not, uh, that's correct, I'm so sorry. So I just told you the whole surplus, you're absolutely right. Uh, we're, we're moving the Charger, relisting that. They're going to go out and tear the living heck out of this nineteen ninety-nine Ford F-150?
And if the motor is expired and it's more expensive to put a motor in.
Is that a nice way of saying the motor's not working? Okay.
Yeah.
They said catastrophic failure.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many miles did you end up getting out of that, though?
Keep in mind, that's, that's, that's kind of like dog years, the firemen miles are a lot worse than regular. It, it's, it's in, at the end of the choose.
Got it. The Charger, you're relisting. Gotcha. Okay.
On a new service that we use going forward.
Yes.
Costs us anything.
Yes.
That's great.
So thanks, thanks for correcting me on that, because then you're like, when's this one fifty got to get listed? It's not, we actually had that conversation, and so, yes, they're going to chop it up, use it for training. And also understand, we're helping the airport with surplusing, um, and disposing a couple of their, uh, planes. And I understand one of them's also going to be used for training as well, so they'll be over, uh, doing the same thing with a plane. A fire engine?
Fire engine, the one that we're getting rid of.
Yeah.
Will be on the gun.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, we're not tearing that up.
No.
Okay. Oh, yes, that's correct. The fire engine's going on gov deals. Okay. All right, we all good?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, and the last one is, uh, emergency, uh, oh, yeah, the fire engine. Um, uh, God bless, um, it was having a little leak, um, took it to, uh, have a, uh, check out. Of it, um, the chief sent me some photos and says, well, it's pretty obvious by the photos of what's wrong with this truck. I studied the photos for quite some time, not sure, because it almost looked like a sonogram. And so I'm like, well, I don't see the baby, what, what am I looking at? So chief, you want to tell us what's wrong with the fire truck and why we had to, um, get it repaired under emergency order?
Short story is the cylinders.
The microphone. All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There was some, um, maintenance work that was recall stuff that needed to be taken care of. We talked to Cummins, sales and service out of Eugene, they came and they were getting the, the numbers off that they had to have to do the, the free work. And then he said, you realize that your oil is coming out of this and that's not normal right around that area. And, uh, so they took it up to actually do a, a, an evaluation and to fix part of it. When they got into it, they look inside the cylinder heads, which a lot of power comes out of that. And they were scraped up and there was places where it looks like water had got in there. It's a fire engine, could have happened, I guess. And there's color, discolorations in there, they were explaining to me that that's not a good thing when it's discolored. And he said they could put it back together and it would probably make it maybe six months and then it'll just have a catastrophic failure like our other one did. And, and so we just used our best judgment on that, and it has came back and it came in right around where the quotes at within fifty to a hundred dollars of that.
Thank you. This is an older fire running.
No, twenty-four, twenty-fourteen. No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, you'll move on to public comment, and then the next one is Resolution thirty-three thirty-nine. And so we'll bring up our city planner to talk to you about the twenty-twenty-three. Coos County Multi-Jurisdiction Natural Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Yeah, that's exciting. Hello.
Hello, good evening. So, before you is the resolution that is a culmination of a multi-year effort to update the Coos County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Which we can call the N H M P. Our previous plan expired in twenty-twenty-one. And there's been an effort since twenty-twenty to draft an updated plan. In February twenty-twenty, this body approved participation in the steering committee for this plan. Which included our previous city planner, police and police chief. As well as our public works director, fire chief, and engineering coordinator. This plan in full is seven hundred eighteen pages. But I've pulled out the North Bend Pacific sections to hopefully keep your packet a little lighter. If, uh, if any of you would like to review the full plan, I'd be more than happy to send that over to Mr. Maline and we can get that disseminated to you. Um, the natural hazard mitigation plan aims to address things like earthquakes, tsunami, flooding, windstorms, et cetera. This plan is required to be in place in order to receive certain grant funds and disaster relief in the unfortunate event of a disaster. The tribal governments, water boards, school districts, and other interested parties were also included in the update of this document. Overall, I think the plan captures an in-depth look at the geology, climate, and potential hazards within our jurisdiction in ways that we may mitigate these hazards. Staff supports the adoption of Resolution thirty-three thirty-nine. Adopting the Coos County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Did any of the hazards like change ranking, you know, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty?
I don't know off the top of my head, I could certainly find out before tomorrow evening. Uh, but I, I don't believe so, I think that. I think it was just a general maintenance of the plan.
Yeah. What are your top three takeaways? No question, you can say. It's impossible for, I'm just curious about what, what comes to your mind, the most important areas that you felt were in this company.
Well, I think the, the most important things that we have to be concerned about in our jurisdiction is, uh, flooding. Tsunami and earthquake, um, tsunami and earthquake are obviously going to be catastrophic if it goes the way it's supposed to. And we're going to have a lot of rebuilding work to do after that, uh, flooding. We don't have a whole lot of development in the flood plain, but we have enough, uh, in and adjacent to it, that I think that it's worth. Being conscientious of, uh, of the hazards that exist within the flood plain.
Yeah, so we can become an island for a few minutes, hours, days.
Yes, absolutely, very quickly.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, um, the next is on here, uh, because, uh, each, uh, year for the annual League of Oregon Cities Business Meeting. Uh, there is a voting delegate, um, in the past, um. Uh, since I've been here, uh, the mayor's been designated, but this is actually the will of the council. And so the council has to designate who they want as their, uh, voting delegate. And then we need to communicate that administratively to the league of cities. So feel free to discuss.
Yeah, question, um, do we, do you know if you're going to the, who's going to the L O C meeting? And would they be there on Saturday, October fourteenth? Because it's, because this is, so it would be, um, the business meeting that Saturday morning.
It's not the Friday, September twenty.
Or is it Friday as part of the L O C, so Saturday, October fourteenth at eleven-thirty A M?
Yeah, it's part of, it's incorporated into the actual conference. And so, and then usually they have food and stuff there.
Yeah, so it is, yeah. And the reason why I'm asking that way, because I will be at the conference. But I might not be at that meeting at, um, Saturday at eleven-thirty. So is there anybody else who is going to be there at that time? Are you, it's. Okay, have you decided, Councilor Jones, if you're going?
Um, I'm going and I could do it as a last resort. Well, it can't be a last, we gotta vote. So, in this moment, last resort, okay, Russ and I are heading on, I have a bad day.
Okay. All right, have you decided you're going?
Oh, me there.
Okay, and, uh, Councilor Norton, have you decided if you're going to be going to the L O C?
I was planning to go.
For that, okay.
I'm not going.
Okay. Um, because the question would be, because I am on the board all bit, and therefore usually, that's something that I can do is vote. But I might have an obligation where I have to leave a little bit earlier on Saturday, so, um. I want.
You can designate, um, so it's really the will of the council, you can, uh, anyone that is going.
Okay.
Can.
Okay. Wow, you turn, you know, have a birthday and everything falls apart, right? When you're older, he's writing chairs.
Any, any, um, uh, member representing the city can be designated. Um, so, uh, including staff, I will tell you, from a staff perspective, I'm not staying for the whole conference. Um, uh, based on the agenda and, and I'm on the front end of O E D. So it comes back to, um, you all. Um, I think you can also proxy your vote. Um, is that an option on our form?
I'm not sure on the top.
Okay. So, so, and, and so you attend the meeting and then they give you cards and I think they're color-coded. And you raise the cards based on, uh, your voting preference, uh, on behalf of your city, depending on what of the topic here.
Which sounds like a fine medical.
And only, when is your deadline on this? Because I can confirm what time I need to leave. And if we, you know, it's, we can do a couple of things here, so this. Whoever we decide would have to make sure that they're a- able to stay at this meeting. It sounds like there's still a lot of things up in there, I don't know if you decided your departure time. Yes. By Friday twenty-ninth, so we have a little bit of time, but does it, we meet again before then?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
The question is, can you do an alternate?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can do a primary alternate, so if you're not there, your alternate, um, then vote.
Okay. So do you have a volunteer, so I don't mind being designated the person, do we have a volunteer as an alternate? Okay. All right.
All right, so tomorrow you'll just have to memorialize that in your motion.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next is, uh, word of bid for minor paving projects, this is your public works director. And this will be on page one sixteen of your packet.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, um. Staff has limited budget after doing Oak Street to do street repairs. We had approximately between thirty-eight and forty thousand dollars left to do street repairs. So we put together six different projects, estimated them. To fit in within our budget. Um, that was Union Avenue, Vista, Sixteenth, McPherson, Carl Lane. Trying to remember the other. Because of the levels on our estimates, we got quotes on McPherson and Vista, which we thought would fit under roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. See some decent quotes from Knife River, we got three quotes from Johnson Rock, Knife River, and Pacific Northwest Seal Coating. Um, total amount is twenty or thirty thousand, three hundred for repairing these. These are grind and inlays, they're not total street replacement, so. One thing that made McPherson a little cheaper is it's concrete underneath, so we're only putting two inches asphalt back in it, but that area. Basically from Connecticut to halfway in front of City Hall, we'll be just paving a twelve-foot lane. And then actually another little bit of twelve-foot lane across California, because that's areas that are extremely deteriorated. Um, Vista's a small piece, about twelve feet and went by a hundred and sixty feet in length. You know, we have, we have lots of paving priorities, it's just fitting within our budget. So this is staff suggested to, we got three bids as noted, and some very good bids. So staff's therefore recommending we. Offer our award to contract to Knife River to take care of those two spots.
Can I?
Yeah, question?
Yeah, so I'm just comparing the text of the quote that we have from Knife River with the other two. And, you know, noticing that it's pretty sparse. Text of the quote that we have from Knife River with the other two and, you know, noticing that it's pretty sparse. And also since it's the lowest, I'm just wondering what isn't included. In theirs that is included in the others.
There. How we put these out, we list on our quote sheet. What this, we're actually providing traffic control, we're gonna grind. We have a asphalt zipper, it's called, which will grind the pavement out. They come in. Uh, remove, cause what we do when we grind it is it's basically like putting, leaving it in the gravel road surface, we actually grind it and roll it back in place. They come in the next day, peel it out, put down tack coat. In the way it's bid. There's a lump sum item, which is a prep. Preparation, um, removing the material, hauling it off, disposing of it. And prepping for paving and then a tonnage price. Um, per ton of asphalt mix placed. Uh. And in both cases, Knife River was a low, what I mean by that is, because they were very competitive. Um, as you see on Vista. Uh, Knife River was ten thousand dollars. I think Pacific Northwest Seal Coating was ten thousand one hundred and thirty and. And Johnson Rock was ten thousand five hundred and thirty, so. We're making sure they're bidding on apples and apples, we draw plans, show the box amount of areas and we look. Because the only unit price portion of it. Is a per ton, okay, cause that can vary a little bit. Um, we make sure that we're not getting. Uh. Duped in any, by any means, uh, they were the lowest tonnage price. So if, if there's a minor overrun, under run, they're still gonna be a little bit in this particular case.
Gotcha, any other questions?
Question, yes. I'm wondering why, um, the. The part of Connecticut which sees all that bypass traffic, the twenty-five or three thousand cars a day. The designated collector, because that is alligator. To the point that it's gonna start falling apart, that particular intersection of McPherson, Connecticut.
There are multiple places in town in. Similar condition or same condition. What we were looking at is what we could fix with an inlay. Um, specifically minor, I mean with these smaller dollars. Which is basically grind and remove and replace a portion of that. Uh, I didn't specifically look at Connecticut, I'll tell you that, I'm not gonna. Uh, I did look at Montana, I mean not Montana, but Union from. Basically Montana to Florida and just extent of that crawl lane is. Pretty poor shape where we can actually grind an inlay, problem is we weren't gonna get these bids till school is in. Um, place, so trying to do it during the. School year, right in the middle of school traffic wasn't very conducive. Uh, but I didn't look at Connecticut specifically, what we were looking at specifically. Um, and most, a lot of us based on what Albert. Our street department forum and says they spend the most time pothole patchy.
Do you have any plans to do traffic counts on that collector anytime?
We did one last year.
You did one last year?
Yeah.
I, I don't remember that the council heard the numbers on it.
We put it in our traffic committee report, cause it was brought up, um.
I thought that it had been tabled and that the traffic counts were also tabled, so.
No, we actually did. Uh, we did counts on Oak Street. Connecticut. And we, it was in a traffic committee report, traffic was, you gotta remember this was. Twenty-two, we still haven't, it was actually lower than it had been in the past, we had one from like two thousand sixteen or seventeen. Uh, and then it actually dropped slightly, it was in the range of twenty-two hundred, I can't, I'm not gonna tell you exactly, cause I don't remember. Uh, but it was included in our traffic committee report. And I'm thinking in August of. Twenty twenty-two. The traffic count on Connecticut, we actually counted it two places.
Yeah, are those, um, are those, if Councilor Norton wanted to review those, or is there something she could easily?
It'd be. In the record, I believe, because we did a count on Mead Street right across from the fire department and we did a count on Connecticut.
Yeah, I know you're dealing with limited dollars and you're trying to do the best that you can to fix. Certain areas.
We have millions we could spend if we had the money easily and.
Yeah.
You didn't bond.
Oh, oh.
And these are minor projects on one hand.
Yeah.
They're fairly. High-traffic roads in both cases Vista. Um. Is part of our collector system, Tower to Vista to Edgewood. And McPherson. All the people going to the post office and for some reason Jim's vehicles, I'm sure don't do any damage to McPherson.
Well, and I think if, I would, I would urge every counselor to write this number down, um, because so when you're out talking with the public. Cause I was one of the very first interactions that I had with Ralph Dunham, when I gone on to council and I said, all right, what are we looking at here? What would it cost to fix everything? And is sixty-four million, if I totally, sixty-four million, write that down, sixty-four million to really get everything up. And what do we get every year for gas tax?
Well, what we have for capital outlay, we get about just under a million, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In state and federal gas tax. Uh, we spend about four hundred thousand more or less on personal services. We spend. Three hundred and twenty on roughly on materials, which leaves us about two eighty to three hundred for. Actual capital outlay, street improvements.
Two hundred, so like that's, that's the question, right, when we're out talking with people, how do you wanna fix sixty-four million dollars with two hundred and eighty? It's not something that we're gonna be able to solve on our own, you gotta ask, what do you, what do you wanna do?
And the majority, you know, this is a longstanding problem, the vast majority of our pavement was. Originally paved in the fifties and sixties and early seventies. And very little of it, I'm not saying our collectors have, have had some overlays, but the majority. And even with the alligator issues, the majority of that's. Oil in the asphalt, oil is what binds your rock together in asphalt. That stuff deteriorates with just sun. Um, UV deterioration all the years, and a lot of our pavement in this town is fifty, sixty years old. Um, ideally you'd be replacing. Residential streets or at least overland or grinding an inlay every thirty-five years. And your major streets every twenty. And with our budget right now, I think we're on about a hundred and twenty-year rotation. On the average, so.
Only twenty years, yeah.
That's. Just a fact of the matter, but.
Wait, I'd like to be doing something wrong here.
Yeah.
Our sewer has helped, because replacing sewers, we've had to repave streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-four million divided by three hundred thousand two hundred and fifteen.
Yes, Councilor Norton.
Um, and then there, there, in the old part of town here, where Mead, McPherson and Union are so wide. What that is built of is two lanes of concrete. And then at some point, I'm not sure what decade, but the city came through and put in four layers of asphalt, but without gutters. And for some reason, the McPherson by the tennis court was left as a gravel road. And there's, there's nothing keeping the drainage from that, basically a dirt road with gravel in the middle. That then runs down Colorado, runs on to Mead, which doesn't have a gutter and mid-block. It goes across the street and erodes, I mean, it leaves a dirt trail and it erodes all the tar off the asphalt, leaving your aggregate exposed. So it's, it's just, uh, part of the old section of town, it was just. Kind of poorly thought out, I mean, not having gutters, it's, it's a constant battle and an under pressure pavement. So that's my comment on the whole part, I would love it if there could be a little speed bump across the upper end of Colorado to keep the drainage. From the gravel area by the tennis court on McPherson, rather than coming down and hitting and crossing mid-block, cause it's substantial now. Anyway, some history.
So Mr. Dunham, do you have any good news to share with us about?
That specific issue we've identified specifically to be addressed in our stormwater master plan.
Okay.
However, which.
Awesome.
They're about. A third complete at this point. Uh. As far as. The, the only good news is when we place sewers, we've paved almost as much road. At least lanes, we don't replace the whole street. Um, in conjunction with replacing sewers, we've paved almost as much road. Um. Back probably two-thirds as much as we're repaving. We look at these things holistically, next year, uh, is scheduled as Pony Slug Road.
Hmm.
Which we're, uh, replacing from Crowell Lane, a sewer from Crowell Lane to. Vermont, which is your access to Pony Village. Um. Fixing the storm sewer system and. So you won't be shocked, we're gonna actually change the intersection of Crowell and Brussels, we're gonna make that a three-way stop. Uh, cause we're actually gonna narrow, it's very wide for pedestrian crossing right there at Crowell for the schools.
Hmm.
And not only that, it's eroding off the bank, so the sidewalks starting to sag, so we're actually gonna bring the sidewalk in. Make it a three-way stop, eliminate the speed bump, everybody hates, uh. And repave actually all the way to Washington. Um, which between using our sewer budget, our street budget and our storm sewer budget. Um, we have the dollars to do that, but that's gonna use up, this is Oak Street did this year. Gonna use up all our paving monies for the twenty twenty-four, assuming the budget passed, I should say.
And that, would that happen during summertime?
That will happen when school is out, um. You know, it's. Just part of our system, like I said, most of our asphalt. Surfacing on our streets. Isn't a neighborhood of fifty years of age and what's, what you see, we're pleasantly surprised. Um, because as Susanna probably can tell you also, from an engineering perspective, when you see alligator paving, the. The issue is typically a bad base underneath it, that's the pat answer. What we're finding is. It's not a bad base, but you put down two inches of asphalt and after fifty years, effectively you have an inch and a quarter asphalt left. And so it breaks up just like the base, the underlying surface is bad. But the base is fine, so at least from that aspect, we're not having to replace base. But, um, it doesn't help on how our streets are breaking now.
So, any questions about any of our work for bid for minor paving projects?
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda is number eight, authorization to purchase replacement flow meters for solid handling at the wastewater treatment plant. Ralph, for sure.
Simply, again, age is affecting our treatment system. Um, our plant is totally controlled as far as what we call wasting, which is your solids balancing. By our flow meters at this point, and when we put our new SCADA system in, we only have one contact. Um. In our SCADA system tied to our existing flow meters, cause I only had one contact available, what that means is it reports out. Uh, previously it reported out to a manual flow meter system. So our flow meters control the heart of a wastewater treatment plant. Is basically your solids balancing. Our flow meters control that, we rely upon them heavily, our meters are thirty-one years old, um, they have about a thirty-year life. So we're looking at replacing them with. Something that has two contacts, which is a backup, because if our SCADA system went out, we'd have no way to manually control, we need that information. Um, so that's one thing as far as a reducing risk to the city is providing a second contact, so we have a manual control. Um, we received quotes from actually four vendors, one of them didn't meet this minimum specification, so I didn't include it in here. Um. Staff is recommending. Enders Hauser meters, which weren't the cheapest, because the other one didn't meet the specification, but two of them were very close. And they also have, there's new technology out there, two of the meters in their soldiers, there is one of them. Have a automatic calibration system. Incorporated in, which you pay extra for. But that was included in the quote, so therefore staff's recommending we purchase Enders Hauser. Um, meters, they've got a history of long life. Good history, cause they sole sources them. Um, and then this particular case, they were actually. Low quote and they're serviced out of Eugene, which none of the others were that close, so.
Ralph, um, for the benefit of our new council members, can you, uh, very briefly explain what the SCADA system is?
SCADA is remote sensing and reporting, let me see what's, uh.
Don't need the acronym. Just tell them what it does and.
Right, yeah.
Basically, it's a reporting system. That tells you that you can pull it, you can call in and, and pull it, or you can actually bring it up on the smartphone today. It tells you what's. When the, the old system is you just got an alarm. Said pump station one's out. It might have had a little more than that, it might have said power failure, it might have said, uh. That you got a phone call with an alarm system, said pump station one power failed, or pump station didn't tell you anything. The newer systems, they actually have remote reporting, so they'll. Both you can look it up, you can actually try to start the thing. Um, from your phone if it's connected. Uh. If it was just power bump and it didn't restart. We don't recommend that, we always go check them, but you actually can control your, uh. Systems in your treatment plant and our pump stations with your. SCADA system, which I'll remember with Ackerman.
Supervisory control.
Automation, yeah.
Acquisition.
Acquisition, data.
Data acquisitions.
Clarification question, cause you have, there's a certain, there's a total and then you cross out the total and put a different total, is that?
That's because the original, we were trying to compare apples and apples and. When you buy these meters, if you add the. Automatic calibration, when you buy them, they don't, when they quote them, they don't, you have to have a grounding rings. There's about three little add-ons that you have to buy, we were comparing. We were getting quotes originally, we were comparing meter cost to metered cost. Cause the, all the add-ons are a little bit the same, and so we got the quote, we said, oh, this is missing, and that's the reason you see them.
Thank you.
You see the scratch out, it got higher because, oh, that wasn't in the quote.
All right, any questions for Ralph?
No, thank you for this write-up, it, um, I really appreciate when, especially when we get different. Number of quotes, I appreciate how you're making your choices when you detail that in a way I can understand, so I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Yeah, we appreciate transparency too.
Yeah.
All right, with that said, um. Uh, action if any resulting from executive sessions, city administrative report, committee reports, council comments, other business, I don't expect any. Um, and then adjournment, and so meta mayor, that is, um, the review of tomorrow's regular meeting.
So that is our council packet, and so, let me put that back over there. So back into our meeting for tonight. And. What is number four?
Review the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda.
Let's review the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda, thank you, Counselor Schultz. All right, so we have the. A revised copy, did everybody get the revised copy of the? Okay, so I will ask our Urban Renewal Executive Director to walk us through that.
All right.
Get the revised one from your box.
Um. Let's see, you have court order, public comment. Uh, and then you have approval of the URA minutes from the July thirteenth meeting.
Okay.
Any changes, corrections, additions, applications?
Um, for the minutes, yeah.
From there you have a URA Resolution number sixty-eight. Uh, this is a resolution for the URA, uh, authorizing its executive director to sign all documents to purchase tax slots number. Twenty-five S thirteen fifteen dash A B dash eleven six hundred and twenty-five S. Thirteen fifteen dash A B dash eleven seven hundred and engage any necessary professional services. Uh, further information is in your packet on page three, um. And this is using urban renewal agency funds and. Um.
Which, which were these two, or that, we used the?
These were discussed in executive session at your. Prior meeting. So this is just simply authorizing to, uh, exercise what, uh, was, um, approved in executive session. And then once the deal is completed, then we can, um, publicly announce.
Mm-hmm, okay. So then we, so we'll have, we'll go through that, we'll have the executive. The.
Director report.
Reports and then adjournment. For that, okay, so that's your A tomorrow night. And then, um. We also have a review of the Historic Landmark Commission, correct?
So we'll bring up our city planner who. Uh, serves for the staff contact for the Historic Landmark Commission and he'll walk you through the agenda.
So, I'll keep this kind of brief, it's basically just gonna be a presentation, we're gonna go over what historic preservation means. What it is in context of the Secretary of State's, um. Guidelines, how it interacts with our municipal code and then kind of some future steps, uh, that we need to take in order to keep our CLG status.
CLG.
The municipal government. Um, and so. It, it'll be a roughly twenty-minute presentation. I tried to keep it fairly brief but thorough and, uh. Hopefully you guys enjoy it.
Is this gonna, will this become like, um, a third? Meeting that the council has, so we'll do council, U R A.
Probably quarterly, yeah.
Quarterly, yes.
So for the benefit of the council, I sent you a memorandum, uh, we had an onsite visit from the state. They do a nice thorough audit, I sent you a memo. Uh, letting you know the status of that audit and what their recommendations were, and so you're having your first quarterly meeting.
Captain, okay.
Without the certified local government status. Um, uh, we then would be ineligible to apply for a lot of these. Uh, technical assistance and other grants that we get through the program and so, um. So, uh, we appreciate, but however, um, if you can find five to seven other. Um, folks that have some interest in historic preservation and you want to recruit them, uh, to serve on a historic preservation landmark commission. Um, you can, um, uh, pass the baton and get out of that and let them, um, uh, enjoy the time, uh, with Derek.
We'd have to create that committee though, right?
Right, uh, we do have a question from Councilor Nordoff.
Um, I know that several people were on the Historic Landmark Commission when it was being chaired by. Um, Planner Chelsea Schnabel. And what happened to that commission?
So, um, uh, she was working to actually recruit, recruit and recruit in order to have it. Um, those folks were apparently at the time name and place, not actually participatory. Um, and so, uh, she got to the point where she could not, um, recruit enough folks. And so, uh, we came full circle back to the U R A, uh, correction to the council. And said, uh, we, we're at a crossroads here, we need to do something. And so, uh, we all obliged and service this so that we can continue. And that's all great, except we also have responsibilities and the state pointed that out to us, uh, which is that communication. So no one is opposed to trying to get others involved in the process. Uh, there's requirements for who can actually serve and so, um, in order to make sure that you all serve, we have to get you a little training. And so that training is starting tomorrow.
Ah, yes.
So, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to the presentation. All right. So then, let's see, that's for, you know, looking at our work session agenda. That was really the last item before we move to executive session. Let's see here, yeah. Because number five was review the Historic Landmark Commission Agenda. Um, number six is the executive session U R A. And the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dash six six zero two E. Which allows the council to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff. Shall be allowed to attend the executive sessions. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject. Of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. So, to the city recorder. You want me to not adjourn now?
It's up to you. If you'd like to adjourn now and say that as soon as we leave executive session, we will be turning and finish it, or we can come back and adjourn.
Okay, what flows better? Go, it flows, but probably flows better to adjourn, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Dismiss everybody and then when we come back, we'll immediately. Redismiss, okay, so meeting adjourned.